All right, if you would like to, please join me in the Lord's Prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father.
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and glory forever. Amen. Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Roll call, please. All right, Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yurda?
Yes, sir. Okay, do I have a motion to accept the agenda and the addendum, please?
I'll move.
Second. Roll call. Okay, Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yurda?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Okay, administration, administrators' reports. We'll start with by his voluntary, Dawn, please.
Okay, so our open house went well. Staff attended professional development and formative instructional practices this week. Also, we had our behavior teams attend crisis prevention and intervention training. So we're already on that front as well. We're planning some student and family activities. The National Anthem Project is September 1st, and that'll be K-5 with Mr. McConley and Mrs. Ray at the Brook. Donuts with grownups, AKA Grandparents Day. We're going to have that at both Byzley and Secrest. Byzley is going to be September 14th. We're also going to start our fundraiser in September as well. Sager starts going very well. The girls have been there for the first two days. Girls, and tomorrow, we'll start boys on Monday. So we're hoping that also goes well. So we'll have another first day of school on Monday, and then another first day of school when they all come back on the 24th. So we've got a couple firsts coming, but we're doing really well.
If you want to touch on Secrest stuff, you can.
Okay.
You can throw a stick down there, you know.
I'm trying to do that. And actually, Secrest Donuts with Grown Ups is September 8th. So we're beginning and ending with that. And again, Sager started well for both. We're starting to do some more testing and assessments in kindergarten now that we have those small groups in kindergarten. So they're starting KRA, and they're doing that beginning baseline assessments, which is really foundational. Seventh grade and first grade will also be getting, will be beginning their year assessments for the baseline data as well. And really, our focus this year is to really align the two buildings and to make sure that we're doing similar activities about the same time, doing it in the same way, having one goal. That is, to be all about the kids, every decision, every day. One team, one goal. And so we don't even say Byzley and Secrest anymore. We're locations, different locations, but we are a K-2 team, and we're really focusing on that. So we're off and running, and we just want to wish everyone a great school year. And we just hope that it just continues to get better. We're on a roll.
Thank you. Does Ashley, yes, there, you have Secrest voluntary?
Yep, and everything aligned with everything Dawn said, the back to school. Last, we had there on the 10th, it ended up working out. We combined all kindergarten through second grade. Kids were able to get school supplies, free books, there's space painting, bounce house, free haircuts, popsicle store prizes, and we had a lot of great feedback from the families from that event. Same thing at Secrest, the National Anthem Project with Mr. McCon on September 1st. And he's calling it against the game from the team up north. And our Donuts with Grown Ups, like Dawn said, is September 8th.
Awesome. Okay, we'll move on to Meadowburg Middle School. JP and Doug, please.
We've had a great start at the middle school. And we'll pretty much just attribute that to how our staff, how prepared they are and how great they are when we need something done, we're getting the last few days, and they just make it happen. They're early, help us out schedules, and help kids, all the lost souls that can't find their classrooms. They help them along the way. And, you know, we've had a great start. We are also starting some of our preliminary baseline testing next week, our MAP tests. We're planning on doing those Wednesday, Thursday, Friday next week. All of our fall sports and activities either have started, a couple weeks ago golf started, and then the regular seasons for all our other sports. Cross-country golf, all football races, they begin next week. We're looking forward to those. And also, our one major fundraiser of the year kicks off next Tuesday. We had a study hall unload about 580 boxes candy bars today. They'll be gone in about two weeks, and that funds all of our trips we send kids on all throughout the year. Minus the DC trip, we do a separate one for them. Funds everything else we do for the whole year in one fundraiser, so we'll get that out of the way and just enjoy the rest of the year.
Is it still the candy bars, like the dollar piece? Are they still a dollar?
They're still a dollar.
But they're this big now, right?
They're one bite size now.
They're bite-sized now.
They're still a good size. They're dollars. It's fine, so they just really get chalked.
It is good. Those have been around forever.
Yeah, they have.
No McDonald's coupon on Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah, not for a buck anymore now. That's pretty neat, though. I haven't seen those. I mean, they're still going.
They'll be out next Tuesday, so.
While I'm thinking of it, were you responsible for the sign that was out front to say, just, somebody said for all the construction?
Yeah.
I want to compliment you on that. That's a nice touch.
Listen, I'm glad because I kind of had to sneak in on the construction side.
Yeah.
But I figured that would be good for a while. We don't have to mess with it.
For everybody that doesn't know, what did it say on?
Uh, let me see. Our, our, we're building the future of our nation.
Yes, that's very nice. I want to compliment you on that. Thank you, because that's what I want the public, I guess we've talked, and there's not a lot of complaining, and people are being patient. And that's what we need to do during this. It's a lot going on. And I want to, I want to compliment everybody here, because with everything that's going on, starting school, and keeping this place afloat is amazing. So thanks, thanks all of you.
Doug, you could talk, whether JP.
Yeah, JP, yeah. I was going back, I was going back to Doug for sure, but I wanted to say thanks.
I don't care what JP says, he can talk.
I think he said it all. We might have to look into this comment.
Well, you have anything, Doug?
Nope, good.
If not, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Golick.
First of all, I publicly want to thank, first of all, my staff at the high school. Phenomenal job, just unbelievable. The students, and I'll tell you, especially the parents, they have been absolutely fantastic. Not one complaint at all. Now, I'm sure they're, but they're, but they're accepting it and moving on. So the first day, you know, we had our staff, you know, scheduled at certain spots. People who weren't even scheduled came out to make sure, hey, do you need help? What can we do? And so kudos to them. It's been great. We made a little bit of a change, which I think has alleviated some of the traffic on Lucasburg and also 821. So tonight, we had, we were out, buses and everything by 3:10.
That's good.
That's awesome.
Sometimes, before the construction. So I'll tell you what, very, very good. Like most, we are getting ready for MAP test as well. We're in the time where kids are trying to figure out, this is the schedule, move classes around. By next week, that is finished, so everyone should have their classes and ready to go. Mr. Wheeler could not be here tonight, had a few things. I know one was meet the team and some other things. Our first home event is Friday night, at Home Against Maysville, followed Saturday, which volleyball, JV's at 10, followed by varsity. Golf, I know they have one canceled. Did the varsity have one canceled?
Yeah.
Okay, and I know cross-country starts next Saturday, the 26th. Building looks great. Janitors did a phenomenal job. We even had the janitors go outside, edge the grass, without saying a word, so.
Good.
Kind of taking a little pride, and so the buildings look good, staff's good. Great group of freshmen coming in, JP. Phenomenal job, you guys. A good group that came in. Amazing. Other than that, that's all I have.
Just to piggyback on that, Sheriff's Department did a big, you know, played a big role in that. You know, they were out there, had that set up months ago.
You just called them and they just?
If you want me to.
Did amazing.
Yeah.
Getting, keeping the buses going.
He did.
And Scott and Jeff, you know, hustling back there.
I think if we get a chance, we need to reach out to Jumbo and let him know, because I'll try to stop in and say hi, because.
Hey, don't, don't, not too much.
Oh, I know. You gotta, you gotta take it easy with Jumbo.
He's already here.
He's not just called Jumbo because his physical size, it's because his medical. Yeah, but I, like I said, it's been amazing to me thus far, to see how it's went.
I just got one more thing.
Go ahead.
You guys are going to vote tonight on Harrisong. Please do not hold it against him.
He said, well, you.
He knows me. He's from my hometown. I was his high school principal. So please do not.
I want to, hey, I want to talk to him before we vote.
Executive session.
Yeah.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Okay, very well. We'll go on to curriculum directors. Scott Boffin, please.
Yeah, not a lot, obviously, just starting the school year. I do want to commend all of our staff and our district leadership. You know, during this whole process of transitioning into the construction zone, we met multiple times and laid out our plans for how this is going to work, and it has been about as good as we could hope during this process. That's a, you know, that's a commending, you know, all our hard effort and work in terms of getting this all set up, so I do appreciate all that. The only thing, again, not a lot yet, you know, curriculum-wise, other than you all mentioned the MAP testing, which we start off here at all of our schools early. It's our baseline data we use for the district. We use it three times a year. It kind of helps us kind of placement and where kids are and how they're growing. I'm excited to see where our DLT, our district leadership team goes this year. We kind of changed the process last year and set up some subgroups to focus on specific areas that I thought were very important to the district, and went really, really well, and I'm kind of excited to commit work with that leadership in terms of kind of where we want to go, with our focus on what our district's goals are. And we've already began, and Dawn touched on this briefly, but we've already kind of began preparations for our transition planning. I know it feels like we're just starting construction, but we're already starting to get ready and plan for once we're in the new building. So it's going to be a big process. It's going to take a lot of effort and working together, coming from five buildings really into one, in terms of how we do all that academically, how our staff shares, what we do, you know, making sure we're streamlined and as smooth as possible with that. So we'll be working through that over the next, really, three years of processes, and hopefully, excited for when it comes to come, so.
Yeah, they're really only 14 months from K-5 being.
K-5 is only a year and a half.
We're about 14 months.
And we're talking.
Assuming things stay on track, you know.
My opinion, we're talking about how difficult this is. I think that transition for you guys is going to be.
Yeah, next year, it's going to be a mid-year. It's going to be mid-year transition for the K-5, really for everybody, except for the middle school. The other four buildings are all going to be transitioning, basically during that K-5 opening there during the holiday season of '24, really. So it's not very far off, really, once you think about it. So there's a lot of work to do, but we have great leadership, and this will be fun to do, so.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. We do have one guest signed up under Republican participation. David, is it's to Hopek?
You got it. You know your fawnings.
Well, I'm Slovak, so I. I can't speak it, but I.
Yuck, why not?
I'm going to turn it over to you.
Here, I didn't even, I dressed for the program. I just put it on. I didn't know. Here, Darren knows, and I've got some issues here with the county. And I can't control the roads, but you've gathered in body for the buses, the kids' safety, everything. Finally, Robbins Road after a year. I went to Paul Sherry. Now, I, and the, trust me, I mean, it's, it's, it's getting, it seems like we're on the other side of.
Foreign, yes. For everything.
Yes.
And I know your dad, bud. And I tell you, it's a shame.
It is.
Why, why can't we, and soggy run road, right now, from there, it's a dust bowl. You cannot, the buses come through, and you pull over, you can't see nothing. That's, that's a health issue. That's how you got to address it.
Safety, too. Safety.
Safety.
Safety for sure.
Thank you. I've got everything written down. I know.
Yeah.
I, I've 40 years with the railroad. At Silicon Dust, it's a health issue. I don't know how we can issue this to get them to chip and seal that. They used to, Darren.
Yep.
They used to.
Your biggest concern is Robbins, then, or is it all of the? That whole area, I didn't.
District one.
Oh, I agree, district. Yeah.
That's, you know, I mean.
We end up on the short end of the stick.
We always do.
Yeah.
I know, but if, look here.
Maybe we need to invite Mr. Sherry.
I'm only one. I went to there, and they said, well, we ain't got no money, but they raised your license plates for the roads. Why can't they do Cambridge? Buckeye Trails? If, we lived on there for a road.
Yeah.
Trust me. Politics is politics.
Let's just invite him here.
That's what we need to do, invite Mr. Sherry here.
How do we go about it, guys?
Well, we can reach out.
I can hear that.
We can reach out.
Put it out, put it out.
We can do that. I.
All day, tomorrow.
I value your opinion, because we live on Pleasant Road, and it's the very last county road. You know, in the south part of the county, and it's a county road, so it's the last to get mowed, brush hog, we needed salt, cinders. Now, it's not that bad, so I'm not complaining.
I know.
But I understand certain areas, and that is small-town government at its best. But I think we invite him as a district.
And if he doesn't want to do it publicly, we're having a meeting.
Yeah.
That's one country, Darren. Robbins, they gave, they, they gave him six months to do it. Something that should have took two months at the tops, they give him a six-month contract. Nobody was working. They just closed it.
It was closed, yeah.
Two different dollars.
Yeah.
But travel the counties, travel Guernsey County, and you see where the oil wells is going.
That's where the roads are the best.
They're paved, and they're, they're beyond, and here, we're on this end, and we're, they're, we're falling short. And I, that's only my issues, is how I see the buses come.
That's a good point. I'm glad you thought.
We'll make sure we invite you back from there.
Yes.
They know me in there, believe me.
Well.
Trust me, they know me.
Can I get your phone number?
Give Devin your phone number.
I'll give you my card, and stop by and get some wine.
Oh, shut that off. We're talking.
No.
I thought you did have a card.
I do have a card.
I'll give you a card.
That's a good thing, I think.
Nobody knows. He knows.
Yeah.
So many greats up there.
Really?
I'm Billy Durst, he's got an amazing.
No kidding?
My, yes.
I never. No, he's.
She's my cousin.
All right.
I sent Stohmich.
That's Catverd. He's all on Catverd, but the little, Mr. Stohmich, what's the name of the road you live on?
Conker.
Conker. What road is that?
It's on Conker, yeah.
The road.
Conker Hill.
You live on Conker Hill?
Yes.
That is Conker, yeah.
13820 Conker Hill Road.
Okay. I'll, I'll try to get ahold of him tomorrow, and then I'll call him.
You got to go drive by just his grates.
Okay. But no, I, we'll definitely, Devin will address this. It's a good point.
Did you say 1318 Conker Hill?
Yes.
Okay. I'm interested now. You don't want to go get a Maybach, hold on.
But no, but it, it's, it's not that. It's just, Rich, they did a good job of all, in the other areas, but the county is forward. That's what we got. I mean, come on.
I've heard a lot of similar.
And that end, but it don't come this way.
Yeah.
And I, I don't like that.
We don't ever get elected officials, I would say.
Well, look, our, our kids, well, hell, I'm, I'm 70s, I went down my age. Our, my kids and everything, you get the publicity, well, where does it go?
Well, I, I can tell you this. They have to track where they chip seal at. And, and, and all of it'd be dated, so we could see what's getting chip sealed the most and what's not getting chip sealed.
Yeah.
Which one is easy to do, because they have to record it.
It's been enjoyable. I didn't realize I dressed that.
I dressed the board.
No, we appreciate you coming and.
Oh, by all means. I'd say it now. Do you know this? Jacujo.
I don't.
You don't understand?
My mom would probably.
I said, thank you.
Well, thank you, sir. And like I said, we do appreciate.
And you don't have to say. If you want to listen, send through the rest of it, that's fine.
But no.
We're not going to offend anyone.
We'll take the series, and Devin will, will reach out and.
I'll call you tomorrow.
This week, he will give us the grease.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's, you got that right.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the treasurer's report with Brandon.
All right, we have approval of the minutes from July 20th. Approval of the July financial report. Approval of a few of the N and L certificates. Majority of those are related to preschool, mainly where they're getting Beach Grove ready, and then fingerprinting, and then just our health insurance, just because of the time when the bill fell. And then D, that's recommended approval of the commercial paper and banker's acceptance report. Basically, that's just something that the state office requires that we submit every year while we have money invested that we borrowed for the construction project. So hopefully, we won't have that for too many more years.
Okay, do I have a motion for items, what, A through D, please?
Motion. Second.
Roll call.
Hey, Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yurda?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Great. We'll move on to standing committees. Policy, Darren, Matt. Good, nothing?
We can talk about that policy now if you want.
Yeah, let's do that.
All right, on my section, you will see letter M. Approved Neola update is presented. Neola adjusted 9211, which was the student support group bill we passed, or, yeah, that we passed here a few months ago, yeah, district support organization, sorry. They adjusted some things, but it really kind of matches up with what we did already. However, I also added a section, number four and five, which the, I told you, I've been talking to the, to the state and the attorney general's office, and they do these trainings. Well, obviously, they can't get to 607 school districts with however many different groups as well. So they created an online training system for booster organizations. Ideally, here's what you can and can't do, here's how, here's how the law reads, et cetera. And it kind of serves two purposes, it informs, but also, if they go after somebody, they get, you know, they can't give them the, I didn't know that answer. So I've added on there, and that's my own language, not Neola's. We are going to start following this, requiring all of our boosters, officers to do this. It's four 15-minute videos and a couple small quizzes. It's not a big deal. But, you know, a lot of times, parents get into these things. They don't know a lot about it. They just want to help. Right, it teaches them the law.
It does. It teaches them, yeah.
And it protects them, protects us, you know, it's probably better for the kids long-term, because, you know, things are being operated the correct way, so. So, quick question. So any current booster will have to abide by this? And then any future booster organization? Yes, you know, annually, they have to turn in all the stuff to be name, image, and likeness recognized. This is going to be part of that moving forward.
Very good.
Starting immediately. So as soon as they elect their officers, they would be required to get the certificate? Yes. And it lists on the site who all has the certificate, and of course, we're going to ask them to turn in a copy. Right. That's good, good stuff there.
I'm kind of curious. Is there a cleaner link that they may have to this? Because like, I got this in PDF form, so I had to type all this.
Oh, I don't, I don't know, but I can look for you.
Well, I was able to get through to it, but I just mean like, if we were going to listen to policy, I bet there's.
This will be on the website, because that'll be on the policy menu, so she can just save a PDF copy of that, and then it will.
A PDF.
It'll have a hyperlink. This is something she's printed off.
So that, all that information.
I gave her that, because that was the site that the actual.
You must have printed it off, and then she scanned it in.
So we can hyperlink that, make it easier, yeah. That's, that's a clerical issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can fix that.
Okay. Yeah, I, I wouldn't want to have to.
That's wrong.
And Matt, it is good for him.
I called that because I failed three times.
Your, your degree's in computers. His degree's in, his degree's in.
That was the worst thing I've ever seen in my life. And I'm like, there's got to be a better route.
Well, I'm glad you didn't call me for help on that one, because I, no, that's interesting.
And one more thing for it, then, then I'll stay out of the policy stuff. The football team practiced on the field tonight. We wanted to, we wanted to do that all week, but in the rain, and, yeah, so the football team practiced on the field tonight.
Great. Okay, athletic. Brad, Mike?
Nothing, nothing.
Nothing?
All sorts are gone.
Glad to hear that.
I, I do want to compliment the field. That is amazing. And the cold shadows, this is, this is class, guys. You did a great job. You got everybody involved. I mean, that's, that's something.
One of my clients is a young man from Cambridge, and he's very anti. And he was talking about the field that they put in last year, and I said, let me show you ours. I showed it to him, and he's like, yeah, that's cool. That's really cool. And I was like, yeah, better.
I know how much time you've spent.
Oh.
And I'm sure everybody, Mr., all of us, all, not us, but everybody, the cult nation, has spent on this. And I want to just compliment you, because I know you've been down there a lot. And it, it looks great, so. All right, great. Legislative student achievement. Mike, anything?
Uh, no, nothing. Nothing for Mideast either. We met this week, and there wasn't really anything major going on there.
Okay, Matt, anything with personnel negotiations?
No.
Building and ground, Brad? Yeah. Yeah, definitely. I think we've touched on that. Nothing with audit, right? There's community outreach, Darren, Matt.
Just real quick, I really want to thank Mr. Bachman and Mr. Detrow for putting in, and I'm sure Mr. May and probably others involved, in putting together the plan for the travel for the first day. And, you know, I know that there was areas that were tough, and we've discussed this, but I also want to cheer Mr. Golick for making adjustments as we go, and again, them allowing this to occur. This is how things should work, and I applaud you all. You know, each day, getting better, and, you know, better, and that's what the community deserves. The other thing, the only, the only thing that, like, like, the one thing, like, I'm maybe in the public too much, like, classroom list, you know, that's, that's like the Achilles' heel of my life. So I went back, you know, and was looking, and it feels like we just maybe recycled lists year after year, and maybe the lists were before the iPads came about, and maybe it's something to think about from the standpoint of next year. We are moving buildings mid-year. Is that a problem to have gigantic lists that are going to have to be moved? And so, I don't know, just maybe food for thought. I know that's not really our area, but.
No, that's good. We've been talking about that, just, you know, having that all set up at the beginning of the year, so it's a smooth transition. Schedule's already aligned, where when they go together, it's just, you know.
I know as a parent, if I could just, if they said, all right, you can go to Walmart and fight to find these 20 items, or give me $35, I'm ordering as a school, I'd be like, there's my $35, you know.
We've been talking about that, too, because that's where, I think that's where we're going to have.
Sorry about that. But.
You know, the plot spocks are what we kind of talked about, like, because they'll be easier to move, too. Those are the class packs are what we kind of talked about, like, cause they'll be easier to move to.
Well, and with the orders of the items, like, we're gonna cut that way back, and then we also, um, that's an executive decision, I also, I can't handle the Facebook. Buy this for my classroom thing, like, I, I just, you know. Carpenters aren't on Facebook going, hey, buy me hammers and.
Yeah.
You know, so like, that was another thing we shut down, you know, like, we've looked at all that this year.
Like I said, I've seen a lot of positive things, so, uh, we're all moving in the right direction.
One by one. I do wanna applaud all the administrators, cause I've got a lot of feedback about how understanding everybody's been with the constructions, and there has been difficulties with students and stuff, and you guys are doing a great job, because. Just getting so much positive feedback from all of this, and that's directing all the way, you guys are all good, thank you very much.
Yeah, very good.
I was gonna, uh, audit, um, we did get selected for an OFCC review, Ray and Associates is working on that, uh, we don't.
You don't know when it's.
Starting it, but we were one of the lucky ones to get.
Lucky you.
New, new treasurer, you get to run right to the, to the wolves on it, but that was all I had for that.
Nothing business advisory committee, it's, it'll be eaten up periodically.
Okay.
Uh, we're gonna move on to superintendent's report, Devon?
All right, employment, we obviously have a huge list there, um, a lot of coaches, subs, I do, was gonna mention Harris, uh, he can speak at the end if he would like. Since he hopefully will be official here in a minute, uh, B, approve the following resignations, uh, Jennifer Kuzmarsky, we just hired her, but she got a job closer to home, um. Kristen Mills been with us for a while, obviously, Suzie Norman, and, you know, sad to see them go, I will say, the last two names on the list, Lisa and Delaney, they aren't leaving, they are transitioning jobs, so they're not.
Suzie, Suzie's gone.
Suzie, yes, that's right, yeah, they're, they're just transitioning jobs, yeah, I did know that about Suzie, yeah, the first two are the only ones that were actually losing, losing. Um, prove the following retirements, as you see, Mr. Golick is on there, I got a lot of concerned calls.
How can you retire at forty years old?
That's the first thing they ask me. You will see here in a minute, we're setting that up for retire, rehire, which is quite the process, and then Mark Smith's been a part-time associate for us the last few years, I'm horrified, actually. Handbook for Baysville, uh, E's and MOU just adjust some of the supplemental salaries with coaches, we have something come up we needed to fix, um. Couple contracts in there, obviously, let me jump down here to some that I can get deeper into on, uh, K, approved following is district volunteer. Um, Wendy is also going to retire, rehire, assuming she gets a positive vote, so she's going to volunteer in the meantime. We talked about Neola already, and then O and P are those procedures for retire, rehire, so you guys will remember, they're fifteen years ago, that was a big hot button issue, you know, nobody wanted retire, rehires back then. And at the time, legislators passed these policies, where, you know, you gotta announce it at one meeting, then you gotta come back to another meeting, and, you know, you have to publicly announce it in the meantime, and you have to have a public hearing, and on and on and on, it takes. Over sixty days to actually complete a retire, rehire, so you'll see these popping up. And then Q, the agreement between Rolling Hills Local School District and the Ohio Attorney General regarding the national web check program, that is for the fingerprint machine, it came today, so. We are moving on that here directly, so, A through Q, please.
All right.
Actually, should we pull out?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll need to pull out, okay, so, can I get a vote on A?
Oh, shit.
Do I have this, Brandon catch up here? I'm gonna let him catch up, I see him. I see him going through papers, I'm gonna hold.
All right, we're good.
Okay, we have a motion for item A, and a second, Brad?
And Mike.
And Mike. Okay, roll call, please, item A.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
This guy is a bag, yeah.
Mr. Yerdak?
Yes.
You probably can, but we're, this will just be cleaner. All right, can I now have a motion for C through Q? So everything else but B.
I'll move. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerdak?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
And now can I have a motion for B, the pulled out one?
Motion, I'll second.
Dudley.
Dudley, Jeff Dudley, Mike.
I should've seen that too, that's, I never thought.
I, I don't know that it matters, but why not?
Yeah.
I didn't recognize it.
Yeah. Okay, uh, roll call for item B.
All right, Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
That's me.
Mr. Yerdak?
Yes.
All right, after all that chaos, Harris, would you like to say anything?
I'd just like to thank you gentlemen, I'm really excited to be here, working here, yeah, everybody's been very welcoming so far, so it's made me feel at home.
Awesome.
That's good.
Thanks for coming tonight, he was actually at the country club of, uh, junior high practice. Rattle that up, head it over here, thank you.
Great kid, guys, comes from a great family, and, uh, he'll, he'll be a good addition.
Well, under your, uh, tutelage, we're, we're more than happy to have you.
Listen, it's easy, if not, I'll call his mom. Right, Harris?
We just scheduled the hearings for Wendy and Scott.
That's right, we need to schedule.
So, we are gonna, do we wanna move up the next meeting? I don't have my phone with me.
I don't have mine, sorry.
Uh, calendar, so next, September, okay, September third, Thursday, we.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
And it ends on the sixteenth, the thirty days ends on the sixteenth from this date.
Okay, do we want, do we wanna, what do you want?
Go to the second.
Yeah, let's just move it, whatever we need to do, I think we need to try to do without having any special, because we don't wanna charge taxpayers anything for.
Right.
You know?
Right, I agree.
Seventh?
No, the fourteenth.
Fourteenth, yes, I'm sorry.
For Wendy, Wendy's supposed to be between September twenty-fifth, uh, October sixth.
Hold on, September twenty-fifth and October sixth?
Mm-hmm. So you have to push it back.
Oh, okay.
No, we have to push this, yeah.
Twenty-eighth, be the following Thursday.
Be the last Thursday of next month, is that good?
Sure.
I think that's the thing to do, yeah.
And then what are the dates we need for Scott when you're done with that?
Okay, Scott, um, we need help between December fourth and December fifteenth.
December fifteenth, so, and that actually works out, because our regularly scheduled meeting that month would be the twenty-first, encouraging right on Christmas, how about we move that to the fourteenth?
Good with you guys?
Good, yeah.
Yep, we'll make it work.
Good.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, the, the, uh.
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, September, September, so we're moving that, our next meeting back a week. And then we're moving December meeting up a week.
Right.
But, just so everybody knows, I, over the years, that's always been a touchy subject, change in meetings, because when people say, oh, you did it for this, or did, this is so that we can do what we need to with Wendy and Scott. And not have special meetings, because if we have a special meeting, then of course, as board members, we'll get our hundred and some dollars, and we're just trying to alleviate. For a five-minute meeting charging taxpayers anything, so.
Yeah, we have to have all these meetings to be able to retire, rehire.
Yeah, so there's nothing.
Certain timeframe, yeah.
Yeah, so there's nothing shady going on here, it's just strictly trying to do it so we can get this done and, and not, not have specials.
Falling into the right thing.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, uh, any correspondence, did, we voted on items through Q, didn't we?
Yes.
Yes, okay, any correspondence?
We want a windy way to get there.
Yes, any information items?
No.
Uh, we don't have any executive session? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Do we need a motion to vote on meetings to be moved?
Yeah, to change the dates, yeah, you probably do, especially.
I make a motion to move the September meeting to the twenty-eighth at six o'clock, and the December meeting to the fourteenth at six o'clock.
There you go.
Thank you, Matt.
Second.
Dudley, second.
Ready?
Yes, roll call, please.
Okay, Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerdak?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, uh, motion to adjourn.